I might confuse some of you, but item number five, public hearing one and six year street improvement plan six thirty P M is now open. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on the annual one and six year street improvement plan? Or Gary can do his spiel first and answer any questions?
You can do your spiel first, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
First, the yard sticks I put on around, just want to make sure they're not weapons, they're not there to poke.
I was looking for a fly swatter sometimes.
Hit, yeah, or anything like that, so just, just, and there is police in the room, so.
I see this, I see both cars are out there.
Yeah, so just, just throwing that out. Mr. Chairman, I'm here on the one and six year plan. Basically, I think people are pretty familiar with this, this is a plan that you have to do every year. It's a requirement for your highway allocation funds, it is a plan. And so, basically, you're not, it's, it's not binding in that if you select certain streets for the one year, you, you're not required or there is no penalty if you do not do those improvements in the one year or the six year. Many of these streets have been on this map for quite a few years. Also, you can change the plan through the year if deemed necessary, if something comes up and you need to do a street project for whatever reason, we can change the plan to fit that, what, what you're gonna do. Basically, your highway allocation last year was projected at one hundred ninety-nine thousand two forty-three. The projection this year is two hundred ten thousand and sixty-three dollars, so it went up. Predominantly in the communities I'm working with, it's going up, and so that's a good thing. Your LMI, your load of moderate income, is forty-four point five percent, and what that does is determines whether or not you're eligible for C D B G funds. And to be eligible for C D B G funds, you have to be above fifty-one percent. And so, there are ways that you can try and petition to see if that's accurate, it's based on census, but it's quite arduous and quite difficult to do that. And I'll give this to Courtney, so she has it. With that, Mr. Chairman, I put the map, full-size map in front of everybody. If you have any changes, we can make those tonight and still approve the plan, or if you're good with the map, we can approve it as presented.
I'll see if anyone from the public wishes to speak first.
Certainly.
We'll approve it next month.
Oh, yeah.
I forgot about that.
That's right.
Give everybody time now.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. As you've seen me here a couple times before, I'm Julie Scott, I'm a homeowner, my husband and I. We live at two oh five North Fifth Street here in town. A couple of concerns that we have as homeowners. First off being, if we're truly worried about city growth, why haven't we let any businesses into our community? I've heard that we're getting sued, I do not have the minutes of every meeting, but to me, that seems silly. That if we're not willing to let another business come into town to pay structure, to bring income into town, what are, what's our purpose? Our water in town doesn't pass quality controls, I see it's on the issue tonight, but I've gotten lots of these, never gotten a blue pass. So, if we're truly worried about making our town better, maybe we should make our water better before we worry about growth and expansion. We should probably be able to service what we have. Question on existing or new streets, who, who does the maintenance on them? Is that if we have to put in a street, we have to pay to have maintenance potholes?
The city takes care of the maintenance once it's put in.
Okay, so when was the last time that the city did maintenance, like all the cracks in the street and have them blown out and have this like sealed up and tarred or whatever the compound?
For, well, it depends on the streets, obviously, the last year we had maintenance was this year. We were, we've been doing concrete work throughout the years, we have downtown and everything. They have had in the past crack sealing and stuff, we haven't done it this year or not, but they have, we have a rotation that they've been working on, so.
Because that is a concern, because if we do have cracks, and heaven forbid, once we get moisture again.
Absolutely.
If we have freezing and thawing, we're gonna have heaving under that concrete, we're just gonna create more of a, a nuisance or more of a expense as we go along. Where you're proposing to pave, to me, will not bring new people to town. These are already established neighborhoods, homes, they're not open lots, they're not a new subdivision, they're not an area that will prosper by outside people coming in. To me, I see no benefit, particularly just in our street. You've got the motel on one side, nobody's gonna build over the motel, you've got us on the other side and two other homes. There's no new town, no new person that's gonna move to town and be able to build in that area. So to me, I see that's kind of a pointless street to pave. Couple other little points. The street in front of us also, I don't know if anybody's ever watched it, but we have tons of truck traffic. But there are, I mean, I, I get it, we have semis that come into town, they have to switch lanes to get into the fuel island at Casey's, but there's not a lot of community use of it. I work from home a fair amount of the time, my office spaces that way. I can see out there, any time of the day that I want to, we have a lot, a lot of semi traffic, but that doesn't mean that that's betterment for our community because a semi doesn't have to drive on a block of concrete. One other thing, I'm a little concerned on the drug usage in town, or the drug availability, the drug selling. If I were a new person coming to town that I didn't have family here to move for, I don't know that I would move into a community that has that much. I mean, it's in schools, I mean, I can tell you a car that drives a pattern, I can give you dates and times and things that would almost frighten you, which everybody here probably knows what car I'm talking about. As a new, as somebody that has kids at home, it is very frightening that that's not a higher priority. So, the only thing that, that I ask is, is there a way that we could do a city sales tax to increase funding that could conver, that could come into play for these streets instead of costing the homeowners themselves to pay for streets? Those are my asks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for the public hearing? Third and final call for the public hearing, motion to close public hearing.
I make the motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Brian? Motion carries. Number thirteen, discussion, action, approval of paving bids for the following projects. Euclid Avenue between second and third, Pilcher Avenue between fourth and fifth, Sixth Street between Pilcher and Woodland. Well, good evening again, Gary.
Mr. Chairman, you'll find in your packet a letter from me, basically detailing what, what we did and the bids we received as well as the bid tab. Basically, we advertised the, the, I believe about a month, and then we opened bids on the twenty-ninth at two o'clock. We received one bid from A and R, which is a local contractor, for five hundred and six thousand eight twenty-five forty-eight. My estimate was five forty-eight, eight forty-seven, which means it was about seven point six-six percent below what I had, I put my estimate. Unfortunately, we only received the one bid. I did reach out and you, on the last sheet of the, the packet that we sent, you can see the various contractors that had plans and, but only A and R bid it, and my suspicion is that most of the contractors see this as A and R's backyard, and so they didn't compete with them or didn't feel they could compete with them or something, but that's what we have. Our recommendation is that you award the contract to A and R for the five eight oh six eight twenty-five forty-eight. And I do have a notice of award, if you so choose to move that way, that we can execute the notice of award.
Thank you. Any discussion from the council?
I feel something, we need to move forward.
Yeah.
We've been talking about it for a lot of years.
So, do we have a motion to approve the bids from A and R construction for the three projects?
I'll make that one.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. And number fourteen, ladies.
Courtney, I'll meet your copy after the contract is off.
Okay, yeah.
Look, Gary, do they have a timeframe, if we did start? Just be on the bid tab, on the bid tab, so. I can get that. I know I've got it, I was just up here.
Completion would be November, completion number.
Yeah, I'll, I'll touch base with them and see what their schedule looks like.
We got three of them, right?
Thank you, sir.
Perfect. And then while you're still here, before we go back to Carney, number fourteen, discussion, action, approval of bids for well number three, sixty-two dash one rehabilitation.
Mr. Chairman, as you're aware, the Plainview has nitrate issues, and one of the, the proposed things that, that we need to look at is in reviewing the drilling logs of one of your wells, they basically found a, what we call a clay layer down in the aquifer. And what we want to do is see if that clay, clay layer is creating a confining layer, which would separate good water, potentially good water from down below, from contaminated water up above. Right now, the wells are, if you will, gravel-packed from top to bottom, so the water can, when the pumps turn on, the water can be drawn from anywhere within the aquifer. What this project is to do is to go and drill a test hole and determine if that clay layer is, has sufficient density to seal it off the lower portion of the aquifer. If that testing determines that it's not, then this process ends. And so, that's probably, I think they said ten to fifteen thousand dollars is in that range, and so there's potential, if, if they get to that point, they're done. If, if it looks like it's good and meets some confining layer, or can be, will be a confining layer, then they'll do a test well, and then they'll actually verify that they can maintain the separation through the confining layer, and if that works, then they'll go into your well and actually perforate the, the casing and seal it off at that zone. And then you would pump from the lower portion of the aquifer. And that's the goal. If this, this is a risk, there's nothing to say this will work, but if it does work, it will be the absolute cheapest alternative that you'll have. Because to drill a new well and put in a well, a building and all the controls and all the power and everything is about a half million dollars. And that's without running any pipe, and so if you have to locate it several miles outside of town, then you start adding more money on. So, there is a little bit of a risk to this, but we, we have taken steps to try and, I guess, verify if this is, is something that will work along the way, so it reduces your risk.
Chris, I talked with Chris today, he talked to the company, if we deal with the lowest bid, even if we accept their bid and they only do services rendered at that fifteen to twenty thousand, it's no good, we won't, we won't have to pay the full bidder.
Correct.
So it's services rendered, so if we find out that it's a dud, we're only in for what, what they had to work on.
Yep.
Is there any, you dealing with companies, A W S well over Downey or Downey over A W S?
I've worked with Downey, I've not worked with A W S. If there was a concern, Chris would have identified, he's worked with so many companies throughout the state, that, yeah, I think that, and, and the specifications, you know, are pretty tight in it to where we can hold them to, you know, make sure they get the work done, it's done right.
Let's just look, and the one is from Lexington, where's the other one from? Where's A W S from, you know?
I don't. And they didn't put it on here, typically, they put them on here.
I was just curious.
Hold on here, A W S, Downey. I feel they're not, they're not trying to.
I know, you said the A W S, they're gonna work with Global Water Solutions, the guy that does, that has done that preparation and everything.
Number fourteen, discussion and action, approval of bids for the rehab, we have the bid from A W S for.
Mead, Nebraska.
Oh, Mead, okay, thank you. Seventy-one thousand three hundred and fifty, and from Downey drilling for eighty-eight thousand eight, six hundred and seventy-four dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid from A W S well company.
Second.
Second. All in favor, Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Gary. Mr. Chairman, thank you for speaking up for us.
Absolutely, safe ride back home.
We'll see you all somewhere down the road. We'll be in touch.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Thanks for the whipping sticks.
You bet.
Can give you one?
No, I got a hit mine.
You'll get it from somebody else. Okay, going back, approval of minutes from previous meetings, we have a regular meeting Tuesday, September thirteenth. Leave the next one, special meeting Tuesday, September twentieth, and the record meeting on Wednesday, September twenty-eighth, did you see that, two minutes, Bob? Two minutes.
And Pam ran that.
And Pam ran the meeting. All right. Okay, motion to approve those, please?
Make a motion to approve both the meetings.
Second?
Second, I'm asking.
All in favor, Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries, number three, claims and payroll.
I make a motion to approve, uh, claims and payroll.
Second?
Wait, what, motion?
Second, uh, Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries, number four, reports, man, I believe drilling's at a volleyball game. Police chief. Good evening, chief.
Hi. Could I borrow your paper there for just a moment that I handed out, I didn't, I thought I made extra copy, I did not. Sorry for my appearance, I was working cattle all day, so.
I agree.
I stink.
That's all right.
Please forgive me for that. What'd you say? Yeah, okay, so.
I heard it was cleaning out the shop, but.
What's that?
I heard it was cleaning out the shop, or was that yesterday?
We preg checked today, so. I handed out the, the monthly CAD report, which is our online dispatch report, again, please keep that to yourself, there's still some open cases on that. There is a week that we don't have because I was, I had COVID, so I didn't work the last week in September. Busy month. Few more citations that I should have written the last week of September, but like I said, I was, I was sick, so we'll have four more for next month, dogs and other stuff that I'm working on right now. I do want to address, and it's just because you brought it up, and I think it's very important that our community is aware that there are drugs in this town. I'm aware of it, I just busted a girl the other day with some, she had a healthy amount of pot on her. But, it's in every town, in every school, not just Plainview. We can get rid of two and five more come in, but we are working diligently, I work with, I'm working with N S P constantly, there are investigators and ops. So that, that way, I mean, they're aware that we have drugs here too, so it's not going to notice that we are working, it's just a process. So, thanks for being, watching that, but don't hesitate to call if you see something that you think is kind of, you know, suspicious, because we will address that, okay? So, we're working on it, we are, we're getting there. I think we're making good forward progress with a lot of that, so. Took a lot of pictures of nuisance properties, so be getting in contact with Luke this week, getting that sent to him. I think that's really all that I have right now, does anybody have any questions for me? No?
You got animal on here, and then you got dog.
What, animal, what?
Well, you got category animal?
Yes.
And then we got all the categories for dogs.
I know, it's, okay, so.
Or that's just a toll.
No, we get calls for possums, please don't put cat food on your porch and feed the stray cats and want me to come and get rid of the possum, okay? I mean, I will if I have to, it's coming after you, but just, that falls into that category, so. Yeah, we do live rural Nebraska, it's gonna happen, so.
Oh, yeah, she's Mount Coons at around four A M.
Yeah, yeah. So, anything, guys, anything? All right, oh, I will tell you that that, the dispatch is working perfect, so I couldn't have asked for anything better.
Economic development.
She had a, she was involved in something, like a kids' development program, so she's a broken bow.
Okay. City superintendent, you have the written report, huh?
Uh, yeah, the biggest thing is, we got a clean sweeper, we've been operating it, learning how to do it, the signs are in, are all down now, and. So we're, our big project is installing water lines up for the new duplexes of, so.
Downtown this noon, I had somebody say, what's with the stop signs all disappearing?
They noticed.
Some don't pay much attention.
They don't stop at the ones that are there, so. That's a good point.
Um, our new backhoe, I got confirmation, should be in this week yet, so. I actually got a picture of it, I said, oh, it's, it's built now.
Nice. Uh, city superintendent, or sorry, city attorney.
I don't have much else separate, Jeremy, you didn't comment, we've worked on land, possibilities for the community center extensively this last month. Had to go through about six different rounds, but there's a notice coming, you, I saw you put out a notice to publish. So that'll be more discussion in the next month or so. No, no real action other than trying to get some cooperation out of a couple landowners.
We were successful after, like you said, I don't know, like, back and forth, so.
Thank you. Clown Dog Museum yearly, uh, yearly report.
Now we're down to the good stuff.
That's right, the meat, meat and potatoes of the meeting. No salad or dessert here, we're at the main course.
So, current count for the twenty twenty-two year tour season was one hundred and seventy visitors compared to three hundred and seventy-two last year, but due to the water leak we had over the winter, we were not able to be open for the clown festival, which reduced our numbers. Also remember, this is just the number of visitors that actually signed the guestbook, there's lots of visitors that just come and go, and there's just one person out of a group that might actually sign the book. We had people from Arizona, Colorado, Florida, Minnesota, Idaho, Iowa, California, Kansas, Oklahoma, Mississippi, South Dakota, Texas, Utah, Panama, and twenty-seven Nebraska towns that were represented. We're currently waiting for funding for three grant requests totaling four thousand dollars. The fundraising letters were recently sent to past and present members of the clown band in an effort to receive donations to fund the new display that's gonna be in the new building. And so, if you know of anyone that has not received a letter that should, then you, please let Julie Newman or myself know. All the funds that we see from that will go to pay for the new portable building. There's a fundraising trivia night that's scheduled for January fourteenth, please put that in the minutes. And Julie Burney has offered her entertainment services free for us for another fundraiser that we still need to schedule, and also planned for next year is a couple of social cocktail hours to get everybody to get rid of their money. So, the treasures report, then, the balance on hand as of nine eight twenty-one was seven thousand three hundred thirty-four fifty. The portable building financing was fifteen thousand two hundred. We received fifteen oh eight in donations, we had grant, Keno money in Pierce County, three thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars eighty-eight cents. We sold souvenirs of twenty-six dollars and fifty cents. Fundraising brought in seven hundred and forty-five dollars. The following expenses were legion cal, calendar advertising for twenty, school alumni golf donation twenty-five. We paid two hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventeen cents for our telephone. Volunteer bidding expenses was fifty-five dollars, sales tax sixty-seven dollars ninety-three cents. We did put in all new L E D light fixtures since the T twelve's are now obsolete. And thanks to Jeremy for letting us get in on the reduction in the amount, it only cost three thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. We put in a new restroom floor for seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. And we bought the portable building for twenty-two thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-five cents, which sounds like a lot, but if we would have built it, it would have been eighty thousand, so we figured we're money ahead. The balance on hand as of nine twenty-four is one thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-five cents. So, not reflected in the above numbers are the, all the in-kind donations that we have for a dehumidifier, Casey's water, paper towels, soap, trash bags, all the stuff that you need to run it, that people are very generous in just giving to us. So we want to thank all those people that do that. And in addition, the city of Plainview pays our utilities, mowing, and insurance, so thank you very much for that. Questions? Come visit any time you person.
Well, I said, do you want us to, uh, the next one is for the Keno grant.
Oh, Julie wrote that, but I'll answer a question, if you need a copy of it, to read it. I probably do.
Number seven, discussion, action, Keno grants, Clown Dog Museum, one thousand dollars cost to level up for expansion project.
Julie is a good person to have, she gets a lot of things done, not always does she tell me. The museum continuously receives donated items from all over the country, and all items received in the last three years have been placed in storage because there's no space left to display them. The building expansion is desperately needed to provide our visitors a quality experience, the clown experience will be expanded by creating an art gallery in part in, in the new space along with a display, uh, display showcasing Plainview's clown band. The cost of leveling the lot and dirt work for port, for the portable building was two thousand five hundred dollars. Total funds on hand was five hundred, vendor's donation one thousand, Keno grant requested would be one thousand dollars. The groundwork is currently in progress, so the building can be placed on this site, and if you've been by there, it's already done. The completion data of the entire project depend on the community's fundraising efforts, but we are determined to finish the project within a reasonable timeframe. So thank you for considering the Clown Dog Museum for this Keno grant. And that, he did not run into that metal building in the back.
What does the council wish to do for the Keno grant request?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Keno grant for one thousand dollars for the Clown Dog Museum.
Okay, second?
Okay.
Okay, Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, thank you for all that you do. Number eight, discussion, action, ordinance number nine eight four, set annual salary for city administrator effective October first, twenty twenty-two.
Uh, this is already approved through budget and everything else we did, and I just have to approve through ordinance, so.
Much discussion, I'll make a motion to pass ordinance nine eight four.
Second? Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries on first reading.
Make a motion to waive second and third reading.
Second?
One second.
Second. Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number nine, discussion, action, approval of contract for city administrator effective October first, twenty twenty-two.
So, this was pretty much my exact contract from last time, we had tiered contract, I fulfilled all the obligations and essentially I just took out the readings of this is the first time, or, you know, the hiring dates and everything, otherwise, there's no change except for the salary in there. And then things that were deleted since it's not our first time. Nothing, no surprises, so.
I want a motion to approve the contract for city administrator.
Second?
One second.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number ten, discussion, action, resolution number six five six, authorized signers on N A H T F grant fund.
You guys already approved me opening this account last month, I just have a formal resolution so I can give it to the bank for them to keep on file. And the account's set up already, so you have the account number, but, so it's in paper.
Make a motion to pass.
Sorry, was this during the press? Yep.
I'll make a motion to pass resolution six five six.
Okay, second?
One second, I'm listening.
Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Bob? Bob?
Aye.
Pam? Three zero, passes. Number ten, let's see. Number ten, discussion, action, sorry, the number eleven, discussion, action, approval of twenty TFRH dash three five oh two three drawdown of number four for one thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars and fifty cents, that'd be the downtown fund, correct?
Nope, this is for the housing.
For the housing.
For the housing project is just admin fees for what they've done so far. Yep, Robert.
Yep.
Motion to approve the drawdown number four for one thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars and fifty cents.
Second?
Second.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries, number twelve, discussion, action, resolution number six five seven, request extension for twenty BTR zero zero five grant funding to November twenty-third.
So originally, our grant is supposed to end in November of twenty twenty-two. Obviously, you, we just opened up round two, so, um, in order for us to continue to use the funding, we have to ask, um, uh, the state if it's okay for us to extend our grant for one more year. Which I don't think anybody's gonna be opposed to that, they just. Need it, need it approved by the council that you guys are okay with that.
Make a motion, motion to pass resolution six five seven.
Second?
Second.
Second, Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries, that brings us to number fifteen, discussion, action, accept bids for repairs on swimming pool.
Okay, um, so this one, Wes, when you came in, I was waiting to hear back from lead investigator to make sure that was your final bid, because they, they brought one right before budget. To make sure, and I wanna make sure it wasn't rushed, so, and it is still good, um, it finally got back holding me. And we called around, this is who, the makers of our pool suggestions and everything, and we're still waiting back here from them for the other filters and everything else too. But that'll be with a different company, so this will be the extent of, of lead investigator, so. Um, we've talked about this, uh, we budgeted for it, we need a number going in, so.
Else on? I'll make a motion to accept the bid for the repairs for the swimming pool.
Second?
One second.
Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero, number sixteen, constant comments, Bobby? Pam?
No.
Tyler?
No.
Brian?
No.
Motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I could sneak in just a small public comment on, on behalf of the game commission, uh, thanks to the city for letting us use the library, the librarian did that, we didn't even have to run it by anybody. We ran two hunter safety classes in here in the last three weeks.
Nice.
Worked well. Strangely enough, no Plainview kids. Kids from O'Neill, Crofton, Madison, all over God's creation. But, uh, this time at least, no Plainview kids. I, there may or may not be an article coming out in the paper, I don't know if I got any clout with the editor, but we'll see, but.
Is it more than one, um, session?
I ran two different nights just to give them two opportunities, it's the same session.
But I mean, they can do it all in one session, they don't have to make.
And that's why we, we pull the kids from so many remote locations. A lot of people, if they're retired and think this is a great hobby, they wanna run the ten-hour class. And I concluded, at least in Plainview, some time ago that it's almost impossible to get ten kids together for ten hours of class. It's almost impossible to get them for two hours of class. And that's why I did the two-hour class twice, but, uh, ended up.
It's all it is anymore, it's two hours.
Oh, what's that?
It's only two hours anymore.
They have to do the equivalent, kind of, of the ten-hour class on the computer. Taking a long course, reading stuff and taking eight quizzes or something like that. And that takes them six or eight or ten hours, depends on how quick they are on the computer.
When I came to O'Neill, we did it like four nights or five nights.
That's the full ten-hour program. And that's, there's nothing the matter with that, but I can't get anybody to attend it, and besides, it's a lot more work and could stand a few more volunteers.
Is the computer the prerequisite before they come in person then?
They have to pass the computer class to take the one that I run, and then it's just an abbreviated two-hour class. We're, uh, going to be open for more volunteers to start taking that over, we'll see about that. Nothing for action, I just thought it was worth mentioning, this, this room worked great, except the motion light in the back kept scaring a couple of people sitting back there.
The only thing I'd like to say is, um, for the plan and zoning, for the planning commission for the SUP for the Dog General, that'll be the twenty-sixth. So that's the date that their attorneys came up with, and that's the date that the majority of our, um, planning commission committee there. So that'll be the first planning, that'll be the first public hearing, they will have, come up with a recommendation for the city council, and then we will have to decide another date that works best for the city council and then their attorneys again. So, and we'll do that after, obviously, the twenty-sixth.
And that's a Wednesday, right?
Yes, for the planning, yes.
Anything else?
I had a quick question, I, I know when Mr. Tower was hired, they were, there was talk about him finishing some college classes, I don't know.
Did as far as I know?
Did?
Yep.
We didn't have a graduation party for him, really.
Oh, I, I, I never, never think about it.
Cash, always good.
I'll do a copy.
I think he looks smarter, can't you?
No.
He did. He said, never do chemistry, if the camera's watching, never do chemistry online at home, right?
Correct.
And then we do have our audit coming up on the twenty-sixth, so all the auditors here all day on the twenty-sixth.
I forgot to mention, next week, I leave for management, um, training on Monday, I'll be back on Thursday. He will be with the county, so he'll be thankfully employed with the Dog Dog.
We'll learn lots for your supervisor class.
Man, if the military didn't teach me enough.
Right.
To, and I work with these guys, so.
Right, we're trying not to.
You guys need to consider yourselves lucky that you're finding staff that's cooperative and working hard at it. I went over to Colridge last night for their board meeting, and they have struggled for over two years. And they're now talking to a private security outfit like that does mall security. And they're gonna pay these people that come to town, and I talked with them about it quite a bit. They, uh, they charge a lot, they won't be able to use them for many minute, very many hours, and they can't do anything. You know, and I said, well, well, it's helpful if they're just standing there with their uniform on. Okay. So, but I think they're gonna hire them.
I know we had our, um, Rich came from the water and he said it was, it was nice to see all of our guys that were licensed in water and everything, he said that's a really good thing, because last time was here, we had one just curbed, so, he said that's good for backup and it's good for any problems you have in the future, so.
Okay, awesome. Motion to adjourn? Absolutely, second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same time?